We have no minutes to approve tonight. We canceled our joint meeting with the Finance Committee, which proves to be a wise decision. We were going to review our select board.
You have copies of it already, but I want to get my original. I hated you last week, so it should be in your binder.
Backwards.
Backwards.
Binder.
Storm and work, other forms, key access charter, confidential.
Anybody found it yet?
Not yet.
I didn't see it. I don't know.
You know what, we didn't, do we have open time for the public?
No, I guess that wasn't all there.
They all left.
I know, he said everybody left. He didn't even pay attention. I don't find our budget.
Is this it here?
Yes, that's it. Where'd you find it? Oh, here, it's in the loose, it's loose in the front.
Oh, loose.
Loose in the front. Ma'am, I just want to make sure you're not sitting here waiting for something. Are you here for a purpose? You're certainly welcome to listen to us.
I'm just learning.
Oh, okay.
Keep talking.
Oh, that's Ms. Seren. Oh, okay. I didn't want to make you sit there for something that was coming up later. This is our general government budget.
Yep.
Which now comes to...
Here we go.
Our, our selectmen's budget is now $125,000.
What?
No, wait a minute.
No, 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 no.
No, on page.
Your, your budget, your selectmen's budget is actually several lines. You have, all of these lines are lines that I budget, so...
Uh, 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 starting with page one.
And they're all separate lines in the budget.
All right, so starting with selectmen's.
Which ones are you talking about?
No, they're, they're all, they're just colored. Yeah, starting page one.
Starting page one. We have general selectmen's expenses, $2,190. Office supplies, dues, training. Anybody have a problem with that?
That is level funded from last year.
See, we do the CDL drug testing. That doesn't come out of the departments?
What doesn't?
CDL drug testing?
No, CDL drug testing comes out of CDL drug testing. That's a separate line.
It comes out of our budget?
No, it's a separate line. See, these are all separate lines in the budget, is what I'm saying.
But is that part of our general government?
Yes, it's in general government.
That's our administrative expenses.
It's in general government.
Commercial driver's license. But like, the highway department doesn't pay for their CDL?
There's a separate line for CDL drug testing. There has been since I've been here.
And we've not shepherded that under us. Internet service, three accounts. Highway, police, town hall.
Now, this account last year was 1320. The increase represents $660, and that's because we have an additional internet account at $55 a month.
Oh, because we've got...
Now, we have one at the, at the Old Town Hall and one here.
$500 for email hosting, updates to the website and calendar.
Yes, we have our outside email hosting through JagFly. That cost is $160 a year. The remaining balance is for any updates that we do to our website or our calendar. John Fitzpatrick is our webmaster, he's still doing that gratis. But if we have to make design changes to the website, he has a designer that we use. It's, you know, like, 40 bucks an hour or something, but...
What about IT services though?
Uh, we've always kept it separate because we don't carry our webpage through the same IT provider. Or, we don't, we're not hosting it through IBS or the TAM. We're hosting it through a separate, a separate company, so. It's been, again, that, that was here when I started.
Administrative expenses, why do we have office supplies there and office supplies under expenses?
Well, because, I, I don't know when this came about, because when I started doing administrative expenses, I had only started doing just my travel costs, professional development dues for myself personally. Then, over the last couple years, Reggie has asked if she could also be part of STAM, so there's dues for that. We've paid the personnel, the Mass Municipal Personnel Association dues, which were $200, out of this account. We started buying, like, if, if it's my office supply, in my office it gets charged this, or if Reggie is, if it's more tending toward my office it gets charged to this, if it's a general selectmen's expense, like your tapes or things to do with your recorder, that gets charged to selectmen. So I've just been trying to keep up with the budget, because each year, it's like more stuff's getting transferred over here, so the original intent, I mean, I'm still, you know, I, I still go to trainings, I just, if I don't have money, I just don't go at the end of the year, but... So there, it does represent an increase, because Reggie, as I said, had, has asked to be part of some professional development training and, without me, travel and also dues.
Who's the TA and the?
TA and AA, that's me and Reggie. TA, AA.
AA is assistant.
Yep.
Okay, and then we have postage for 12. Is that our, that's not just our postage?
Photocopier, photocopier.
Oh, oh, photocopier.
Yeah, that's, um, that is our, the photocopier line I increased, and I'll tell you why, and you can make a decision. This is for the, the main photocopier, the copy machine that's in the staff room, and all the paper that is used in that particular machine. That's how it used to be at the Old Town Hall. What has been happening more and more is the offices are just taking the paper from the copy room instead of buying paper through their budgets. So my budget for the copier costs have gone up, because now I'm buying all the paper for all of the offices. I mean, I, I can't say for certain that every single one is using them, but for the most part, nobody's buying paper. Everyone's just taking it from the copy.
Isn't there a funding line for that, in their departments?
In their department budgets? I do not know the answer to that question.
And we want to call their department budgets for photocopying paper and remove those items from their budget.
It would probably be under office supplies, but, yeah. And, and the other reason, there's also another, the, the increase, so that's, so that's part of it. So more paper, the cost of paper's gone up considerably. And I do have a little extra in there, because right now, we have, as I said, one copy machine, main copy machine in the staff room. We have a meeting room upstairs, and we have this meeting room down here, plus, we're going to have that extension. I don't know what the seniors have for a copy machine, but we really need to have a second copy machine. Now, the town accountant's office just received a copy machine from Ed that was on an old lease that he decided not to renew, and they took it and are using it in their office. But it's a scanner, a copy machine, a fax, a stapler. And I had asked David Killson if we could use that upstairs as a shared copier in the, in the meeting room, because there's people meeting upstairs, and if they have to make one or two copies, they have to come downstairs. And they are not, don't seem to be willing to do that.
Doesn't it make sense to always keep an eye on things?
I don't think we're going to give somebody an extra copier.
Yeah, I was giving them a bunch of this.
Well, is there any chance that you would be willing to compel the accountant's office to share the larger copier? I don't understand why they can basically just get a copier from someone else and put it in their office and use it like a printer when we need a second copier in the building.
That wasn't David Killson's decision, was it?
Do we want to request, I mean, I, are you saying leave it available for whoever's using that?
Yes, I'm, I'm suggesting that we don't put it in the accountant's office, that we put it either in the hallway or the meeting room across the hall. Probably the meeting room across the hall, because we'd, we want to have it connected to the server, so it can be a network copier.
David, do we want everybody to have access to these machines?
We only, I was only thinking people that would be meeting in the second meeting room. And the veterans officer. Veterans officer doesn't have a machine.
Anyone can use it. Well, I'm saying, because we used to have the problem over, in the, at one point in time, remember you had to enter your code in order to get, make...
We can probably put codes on it. It's the same type of copier that we have in the main room, it's just a smaller version of it.
We used to have, when, when I first, you used to have to put codes in, in order to, because the planning board had a code, so you knew it got charged to the planning board.
Yep. But I just, it's, it's becoming like a tug of war, because they feel like they're going to use it for a printer, and my feeling, they also, they already also have three printers in their office, so...
My concern is that, you know, there's no increased number of people working in this building from the Old Town Hall, so I don't think we really need another second printer.
Well, the, the distance...
People walking downstairs, but still, I don't, in this economy, I don't think that warrants another copier.
It's not for the staff, though, I wanted to be clear on that. It's for the, for the boards and committees, those being 20 boards and committees we have meeting. Some of them, I shouldn't say the majority, but, working upstairs. They don't have, I mean, if somebody's in for a planning board hearing or whatnot, they have to go all the way to the other end of the building.
We had planning board meetings in this building.
What did you do for copies?
We had no copies.
So I guess that's an advantage, then?
We hand copied everything. We were still using copy paper. There was, there was no copier in the building.
Yeah, I mean, on the planning board, conservation, many, all the land.
There's a problem here in this building, when they were meeting in this building. Lucky we had heat sometimes.
Well, what about encouraging the other copier to come out to more...
I mean, I can understand, I can understand David's concern about having access to the public. You know, or open so that anybody can get to it. I don't know, did, anybody got any strong feelings one way or another?
So it's a benefit to the accountant's office, and it doesn't mean anything, it's just, it's an old copier they got, and it's got a whiz-bang thing to it, but it's, it's, you shouldn't have this...
Benefit to the boards, it would benefit all the committees.
It's, in my opinion, it's a, it's a bigger, you know, it's, it's more than what they need for what they're doing, and, and it could benefit the rest of the staff and boards and committees, and I feel like that's...
There's no control that upstairs on.
All right, well, here, let's not...
We could put it down into, you know, this area.
Do, do, yeah, but you're not going to take it away from them, since you got it. At least my opinion. Does anybody have a strong opinion one way or another? Does anybody want to approach David about sharing the machine?
Well, we can just talk to David.
All right.
I don't think it's a big issue.
But I, I...
The big issue is, is that we're, because the budget being so tight, is that if all the other departments in the town hall are not spending their, their office supply money on their office supplies, but then taking the paper we're paying and out of our budget, what are they doing with their money?
Well, that's what we got to plan.
Well, we, you have to remember, you have cut the expense budgets considerably over the last several years, so, I mean, each year, you know, we've cut...
Yeah, but the problem is going to town.
But everybody gets cut, so it's...
Yeah, you're right, no, everyone has.
But I mean, the problem is going to town. Meeting and saying, "Well, their budget's been cut, and the selectmen's budget has gone up, because we're buying paper for everybody." I mean, we got to get a handle on it, and that's one of the things we've, we've got to get a handle on our own copier, because these, we waste a ton of paper between the five of us.
Yeah, it's becoming much more expensive to copy, because of the cost of paper has gone up considerably. As I said, when I started, it was like $20 a case, now it's up to 30. And we probably go through 40 or 50 cases a year, at least, at least, not more.
All right, so, anybody got a...
All right, so I, so I can reduce it to, I can't level fund it, because I am spending more, but I can take that second copier out and just put it back down to, say, like, 2,800. I think that would be reasonable for the paper.
I think...
Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
Okay?
Postage, 12,000.
Yep.
Are we buying all the postage for the town?
Yes, that, or that's a postage line.
That's a line, but it's...
Yes, for all postage.
But does each department get charged against that line?
Only the departments that use the postage machine. And, and that's also the PO boxes, so, and that's all the...
Have we looked into dumping the PO boxes now that we...
We have, I have a whole folder on my PO box project, but there are many departments who do not want to depart with their PO box as well.
Are they paying for the PO boxes out of their lines?
Um, oh, let me double check that, yeah, I'm not sure. Some departments do budget, I, I, yeah, well, this used to be in Chrissy's budget, the postage machine, but now, because the postage is in the staff meeting room, it's not, it used to be in the treasurer's budget.
There are control on that postage meter.
You have to, we can print reports off it, you have to put in your department code, yes.
To print postage meter.
Yes, you have to have a code, you have to put it in, and we do reports periodically, but I did it, I started keeping track, because I didn't know if at some point you'd want to get to some kind of department level budget, where, you know, you're actually charging departments for their accessory costs. So we do, we did break it up by department, and we do have a report that we get periodically. But some departments, like, I think the fire department, maybe one, I don't know. There's some departments who just go by postage still, like, and you...
By stamps?
Yes.
And, and the council on aging does that, although when they're in this building, that might change too.
We're getting to the point where our electronics wants to be able to cut in our postage further, because moving our medical stuff to electronic will not be...
Yeah, we're not here talking about your budget. I'm just kidding, I'm kidding.
In my, in my office, it's converted to faxing everything. They don't mail anything anymore, they fax everything.
We, we don't mail very much. We, I mean, the things that are in the postage account are the tax bills, the, the street lists, the water bills, I think, are in there. You know, there's, there's those kinds of bills. But in terms of general department, like, for our department, we mail very little. We scan and email most things.
Legal, where did we spend this year?
Legal, so far, we're only at about 50% or less, actually, but we've only gotten billed through dissent. We're, we're on target.
Okay, so the 30 is a relatively secure figure?
The only reason that that might not be enough is if we were to make any kind of settlement. Like, we, the first year that I was here, you actually had a small legal settlement, that we did settle out of legal fees. But if you, if, just for general expenses, we should be okay again, you know, depending on this cable. If this cable contract wraps up in FY11 and doesn't go into FY12. But for, for what I expect on the horizon right now, that should be sufficient.
The Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, that, I think, used to be a planning board expense.
Since I've been here, it's had its own line, and that is their, their assessment.
The park affair, I seem to remember that too.
And the Barnes-Aquifer is the same thing. They get an annual assessment for, for their committee that, we did, we've shorted them the last couple years. I, when you did a expense budget cut at one point, it was 19%, and I cut that line as well, and then I applied for a waiver, and they gave us a waiver for two years, but now they're saying we need to go in the 2,000 again.
What do you get for that?
That is your, you have representation on the Barnes-Aquifer Protection Committee, and you get a consultant from PVPC that organizes, facilitates, and manages that committee.
And that committee does...
Right, they deal with anything that has to do with the Barnes-Aquifer. They meet, I think they meet monthly. Right now, your representatives are Joe Slattery and Jim Labrie. Joe hasn't been going for some time, but Jim has been attending the meetings.
Custodian expenses for taking care of this place.
So this is where I had put in the contract, and I honestly think that if you're willing to consider still putting something in there, I, I can get something for 10,000. I mean, we could do it for half, but, um, the other thing you could consider is trying to hold off until the end of this year, which, and I think Joe's indicated he's going to retire, and then you could just do half a year, like, starting January 1st. I mean, that would be another suggestion.
Well, frankly, I think we should carry something in that line.
Well, we have a wage line for Joe, that's not reflected.
No, no, I'm saying, I mean...
Right, this is just the, right, for the contract. And I actually got, I met with another company who gave me a quote for the under 5,000, which means we wouldn't have to bid it out, and, and it was a good, you know, it would be once a week. So I guess it just gave me the thought that you probably could get something for, you know, between, under 10,000, but it's just going to be a limited service. But that, I really think is all you need right now while Joe's still here.
Once a week, floors?
Yeah, the major stuff. Like, once or twice a week, it would be floors, the stainless, the window, you know, window sills. I can't remember, it's bathrooms, full cleaning of the bathrooms.
Yeah, a good 5,000 for a year, yeah?
Um, it was like about $400 a month, so 4,800 for an entire month. I mean, a year.
Got 20 down to something.
Well, I was wondering, you know, we were talking about the custodians at Norris Learning Systems here. Is there a way to have people in town who already have the equipment come over here and do the floors here to keep it in the town?
Well, I think for the major things, we're talking about that, but this is just a routine maintenance on a weekly basis, not your ma- major floor washings or anything like that.
So why would they come there?
Probably, we haven't, we haven't worked out the details of that.
They're kind of supervised.
There would be a...
It's kind of complicated.
Yeah, we'd have a contract with them, and in the contract, it specifies that, we specify their hours, you know, who, what kind of personnel would be allowed to come. They all have to be bonded and insured and whatnot. I mean, we'd have a contract.
Sort of like the manager of the team.
Yeah, there'd be somebody that, you know, some...
David's talking about the school employees coming in to do the floors.
And we, right, and we've talked about that kind of a thing on an annual basis, the buffing, the strip buffing and waxing. I think that that, that wouldn't be part of this contract that you're, I'm talking about right now. That would, like Mike said, just be general maintenance.
I thought you said some of that, this contract for 1,500 would be, they do the floors, I think that's what you said.
They dry mop the floors.
Yeah, they just, they dry mop them, or maybe wet mop them once a week. They don't buff them, and, it might, it might actually be a hard buff, like, they can spray it with like a hard buff, but it's not the labor-intensive floor treatment we'd have to do once a year.
So what is the board's pleasure? There's 20 in that line now, we're told we could do it for less than 10. What do you want to carry in there?
15. I would say maybe 15. 7500?
I'll go on there, aren't you?
7,500, she said she could do it for less than 5,000.
I think we can do it for 7,500, I do.
75? You guys okay, or is it...
They're okay, is that right? I think they're sure.
We're not going to...
Did you get bids for under 10?
Well, I got, um, yeah, I mean, I, I think that, I got about 20 to 25 for two to, for like, three or more days a week. If we, if we keep cutting back the time, if we only did one or two days a week, we could definitely do it for, for that, but...
Will the place deteriorate if we only do it one or two days a week?
I think because Joe's still work, Joe is still working, you know, for us, five, well, not five hours, because he's spending some time at the police station, but he still is here on a daily basis for at least two to three hours. And he's actually, you know, sectioning off the building and doing a little bit every day. So I think with the combination of the two, we could do it. I don't think we would lose anything for the building. And again, I'm, I'm saying, you know, to play out for FY12, because Joe has said he's going to retire at some point, which may be in FY12. So at some point, we may need to go into a higher level of maintenance. But with Joe here, I think we'll be okay for a while.
All right, I'm working, good.
Do you think maybe 7,500 is a little short then, if I did that?
We aren't buying anything. We aren't hiring anything right now, so the further we get into it...
No, I mean, I have a quote already for 48, so I know I, but it's one day a week, if we want more, you know, and it's the basic services, but it's pretty comprehensive, so I think we could definitely do it for... Yeah, it'd just be one day a week, but it'd be like five, four or five hours, I think, of cleaning.
Do we have an idea with the head counties committing the building?
No, we haven't gotten a sense of that. It's, it's limited still. I, I mean, I, hopefully, once we have our grand opening, more people will...
Building maintenance, a thousand bucks, which seems...
That's our, that's, that building maintenance in general is an account you created, let's see, I guess in FY10, and we've carried that mu, we haven't carried it, meaning we haven't carried it forward, but each year, we've been putting 1,000, but we never spend it, because it's sort of unclear what it's for, so it's just...
A flush load.
Don't say that.
Hell, over 8,000?
Yeah, that's, I've level funded that, and I'm in hope, hope that's going to possibly go down slightly this year, because we, we lost a few of our phone, we dropped a few of our phone lines and consolidated phone and fax lines, but I'd like to leave it level funded for now.
Police Department gas and electric for 20 per across the street, for gas and electric?
Yeah, for the police department and the town hall, I was really, I'm still really in the dark. I did go back and look at the bills, but the period of time that we got for this bill, we did have a bill before we moved in, as they started increasing the heat, but it's really hard to tell a trend at this point. So what I did is I just kind of flip-flopped them, because the town hall, where the police station is, a portion of that has been somewhat mothballed, it's been, the temperature's been lowered, so I'm hoping we can do it with the 20. And then I brought the 23 to here, and, I mean, we're told this is a highly energy-efficient building, so that's about what we were doing it for before, when just the council on aging was here, so...
And this is what we're thinking about, we should come up with an official designation for that other building, so that we know when we're talking about something, which one, which one we're talking about.
The town hall?
Well, actually, what I did is, I changed them to police department and town hall, because that's really what that is now.
So that's now the police department only, and this is town hall?
Town hall, yeah. That's how I did it in the budget terms, so people would be clear.
The police department, it's in the basement.
Yeah, but it's, we're now calling the whole building the police department.
That's in the basement.
What you could call basement.
Basement level. So the same with building expenses. I basically printed out a detail of the building expenses for the police, for the town hall, the Old Town Hall from last year, half a year, and I, I broke it down and came up with those, with those numbers. They, they amount to, let me just get ready to... The annual garbage pickup is 15, 1,520.
Who does that?
The highway department, that's what we're charged from the highway department for trash pickup. We're charged $380 a quarter.
You're talking about, that was something I was talking about.
I did ask Ed if we were going to be charged for both buildings, and he said no. We'd only, it'd be the same as it is now, which I think we're only being charged for one.
I guess we're getting a deal, we can't complain too much, but I still have trouble with the town employees billing town.
This is true, our department's billing us.
Yeah, I, well, I, I'm kind of assuming it's because it's an enterprise fund, so he probably...
Oh, they're doing it as part of the...
Transfer station, I would assume.
It's not the highway department, they're wearing, they're wearing their transfer.
Correct, yes. I mean, that's what I assume, it's not clear, it just says trash pickup, but I assume it's money, it's like, fees that are for the transfer station. $200 for water, which is the annual use at the Old Town Hall. They get the minimum cost usually, which is 45 to 50 dollars. Fire control and the fire extinguishers inspections are about 280 a year, assuming they keep all of the fire extinguishers in place. And last year, or for the first half of this year, in electric, plumbing, and heating miscellaneous repairs and maintenance, we had $1,100, and then $100 for the carpet cleaning, so, which is half of what we paid, because they only have to clean the downstairs, presumably. So I came up with 3,300. Now, that's something, again, I'm not sure, I'm doing this budget, I haven't spoken to the chief. I assume he's not doing a budget for the building, but at some point, we need to coordinate and find out. But I, he hasn't submitted a budget yet, so I'm not sure, but I don't believe that, he hasn't told me that he's budgeting anything for it.
He would do it for the building.
Well, and to, just to move this along, can we step it up a little? Police Department building expenses, are you just, the town hall building expenses, now that's here.
That's here, and I, and I ran those, I ran over those with you a couple weeks ago.
Those are the contract prices.
Those are all the contracts, the, it's everything from, it's everything that I could think of. Dehumidifier, lights, boiler contract, the HVAC, or the HVAC contract, the fire, the inspection for the elevator, the fire extinguishers, the fire alarm annual maintenance, the fire alarm. We have a wet and dry fire suppression system that needs to be maintained annually, and the fire alarm monitoring, which is $300 a year, net, starting half of next year, so I only put in half. And that collectively came up to the 9,915.
Now, the, the town reports, do we really need to print 350 copies?
Well, we used to print 500. So, so 2,000 is, we, last year, I think we only got to print 300 and something. We've been going down every year. That's entirely up to you. You have to produce an annual report, it doesn't say how many copies you have to print legally, or... We put it on our website, we put it on our website.
We have a number of hard copies, but what's the minimum number of hard copies that we can buy?
I would, well, I don't know in terms of, like, if we enter a contract, I'm thinking probably 100 to make it cost-effective. And I think, I think that it would be most effective to have enough to at least just distribute at town meeting, because we put the warrant and everything in it, so we try to distribute it at town meeting in lieu of the copies.
That would be more, 200 would be more than enough for town.
About 200, I think, would be plenty.
Why don't we buy it, anybody?
I don't see too many of those going to waste.
Make a motion, 200 copies.
200 copies, okay. I don't know how much ultimately that's going to cost, but I'll do the math and we'll figure it out. We're, we're actually going to be getting bids soon for this year, so we can get a better sense of that.
Are we going to do something about a cover, or a picture, or anything, when we do it?
And that's where you run into some expense too.
That's more cost prohibitive, unless you want to do black and white, which doesn't come out as, as nice.
I mean, it would be nice if we had the new town hall on it, but I, we could, you know, we could, I don't know.
How about something at Norris, just have some of the, the kids over there do black and white drawings of the recovery, just do it as a project of the art teacher over there.
How soon do you need to cover it?
Reggie's working on the report now, so I would say within a couple weeks.
Sometime, I think it's a day, I mean, we're going to call Collins' last year, our teacher over there, to get some kids to get and draw a picture for what they want on the town meeting.
You try that?
Okay.
How about technology, what are we buying, four, four computers?[1693.94]
Um, oh, and I also wanted to give you these. Um, David had asked me about these last week, so I made copies for you and- and the quotes. This is IBS's, um, analysis of our system. So all of the recommendations that I put into the budget came out of this before. And these are the bu- these are the quotes.
Thank you.
Prove the paper problem we have.
Well, I just kinda wanted to get at least that.
Well, we gotta spin the room around.
These are two different things. If you just pass them.
All right, we'll just spin the room around. These are part of the...
Yes, we are going to. So, yes, the equipment budget contains four new computers, a wireless access point, and I think it... I did not include the external hard drive.
There are two of these?
Yeah, there's one that's got- one that's stapled that's two-page and one that's just a single page.
These two.
In five minutes, you won't need them anyway, so... But just so you can see. So, um, those are the quotes that we got, and they are, um... The computers themselves, as you can see in the report, um, are very old. They're the oldest computers we have. I think one goes back to two thousand and four. And for the most part, they're all running on, um, not enough memory for the processes that they're trying to do. Like, for instance, David and Joyce have antiquated computers, and they're running software, which is a software program. They're able to do it, but it's- it's slow and cumbersome than, um, if they had a newer computer. So over the last year and a half to two years, we've progressively updated everybody's, and we only have four left to do. So we could phase them in. I did put them all in this year's budget, but we certainly could, um, we, you know, we could do two this year and two next year if you wanna try to do that.
How much are they a piece?
Well, four of them cost thirty-eight. They're about a thousand bucks.
This is a quote expires March ninth.
Yeah, that's- I mean, yeah, we might have to get a new quote. I just got that for budgeting.
Do you wanna replace all four computers, or you wanna replace some segment of two- two in the accountant's office and then wait for the assessors and board of health?
The board of health computer is a secondary computer that the clerk was using, and actually, she's now resigned, so she's not going to be here anymore. So, um, so I think that one, we could definitely wait on. Lori's is the first- was the newest refurbished computer we had originally when we started the replacement process, so that's why she was the last to be replaced. But hers is- it was a refurbished computer, and it's pretty old at this point, so... Um, we've got it running good. She says it's running good, so- and she's running Vision, which is a, um, um, you know, a software on it, but...
But if it's old at functioning, why do you have to replace it?
Well, there's always the potential that it could crash.
It wouldn't be a crash, too.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah. Yeah, and- and if it was a memory issue, I would be- Reggie was having a serious memory issue problem. We had to replace hers immediately because she was constantly getting messages. She didn't have enough memory process to- to move things. Um, but I don't believe that's happening with these other computers.
So we're gonna get to phase two and wait for two for the next...
What's the board's pleasure?
I- I just- I'm always- and I just wanna voice this. As we go through the budgetary process, oh, it's just five hundred bucks. Oh, it's just this. Oh, it's just that. And it- all the oh's just sort of end up adding up to a lot.
What I would usually say is, what I'd- what would I do if this was home?
Right, and- and we know there's a budgetary cut coming again of at least seven percent. So I- I recognize that there may be a need for machines, but I would be hesitant to spend any more money than we absolutely have to this year. And we have these expenses for the new town hall. So going out buying new computers at this time might be expensive. We can't afford it. That's all I'm gonna say. It's just...
Fine with that.
Two a ground and...
Two now. Yep.
Okay.
And a block time for IT support. That's...
The block time for IT support is really gonna cost less than it costs now because basically, we're just prepaying for- for service, and then we get a discount of fifteen dollars an hour for every hour. So because we're a ci- a municipality, we're appropriating that money anyway. We might as well give it to them and save money. It's not more money than we would spend. It's just giving it to them on a prepay basis, and that's what they call it, a block time purchase.
Then we have the two insurancees.
Yeah. Um, I think they're both gonna come in. Workers' comp, we've had a significant number of claims. Our claims experience is- is on the poor side. I'm gonna try to get out- we got out a mega, which I think was the best thing. Um, we have a great company right now, but it doesn't change our claims experience. And, um, the insurance general, I think, uh, we're gonna see an increase in premiums because we had the Norris School listed with the wrong square footage. Um, it was- it was off by thirty-two thousand square feet, so we have to pay thirty-six hundred dollars more a year for that. And then we'll have a significant increase in the, um, in the square footage of this building. We only have it listed right now as seventy-three hundred and sixteen thousand, so I expect that to be another two, two thousand.
This building's always been on there.
It's always been on there, but they only had covered the seventy-three hundred, which I assume was just the part of the building that was being occupied or utilized. I reviewed all the pro- the statement of properties list this year against, um, some other records I had had for the energy, and that's how we determined that the square footages were off. I- I don't know when they got that way. They've been like that since...
So the square footage here is what?
The square footage in this building is now, I think, sixteen thousand sixty-two or something. But on the- on the insu- statement of values, last year, we only had this building listed at seventy-three hundred. And Norris, we had it thirty-two, and it's actually sixty-seven thousand square feet. I think Norris might have been pre-edition, and nobody caught it.
Did the assessors pick that?
No, because, yeah, because it's just on the, um, on the insurance.
Who's our new comp care? Who's the new comp care?
Oh, um, we're using Trident. Trident.
Well, and where do we have such loss experience? Who's- who's been getting hurt?
Well, it's not, um, we don't have significant, um, we have a lot of medical-only claims or short-term claims, but we've had a couple long-term claims this last couple of years with surgeries and instances, mostly at the school. I mean, most of our workers- well, highway department and school, I would say.
They should come in and do a class?
We- we really have. We haven't had, and this is one of the department heads complaints, and that's why we're gonna try to go to Maya this year. We haven't really had any kind of loss control, um, trainings or anything with- with the recent insurance companies.
Who's, you know, and someone needs to look at the- who's signing, you know, that these are comp injuries that happen, you know?
Well, they have a- they- they sign off. There's a witness statement that's done, and the insurance company all calls to verify that, you know, the proper paperwork's been filled out. If they have any questions, there have been a couple investigations, um, and then they always have the right to send somebody to their own private, um, person. I don't know if that's ever been done, so... I mean, the other- the other piece of the general...
I- I think that it seems I- we don't- I was not aware that we were having trouble.
Yeah. I wouldn't say it's- I mean, I- and in the big scheme of things, I don't know if it's any more than any other municipality, but in- in our, you know, population, it is...
Could we ask for, uh, a listing about those claims that are pending?
I have a claims experience.
I think we need to take a look at that out of your...
Okay. That would probably be a confidential document. And also, um, on the general insurance, um, I just want to note that we do have some claims against that that may need to be settled, so I'm not sure how that...
I mean, we'll have some pending, yeah.
Right, and some liabilities.
All right, um, any questions on the budget, gentlemen, ladies?
Next week, the finance committee's coming in? Oh, two, the twenty-ninth.
Okay, um, we have a payroll warrant.
Payroll warrant, P eleven dash thirty for the...
Some move to approve?
Hang on one second. This is the school department. Let me just make sure. Okay. Is it- so there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There.
Aye.
Aye.
Um, payroll warrant. Oh, declare the- he did- chief leave? Declare the ambulance surplus?
He did leave. He had his radio in his hand as if he was responding.
Yeah, so the ambulance, um, is- there's a sec- the second ambulance. The chief would like to advertise it, and...
Are we gonna use that same service again?
No, we're going to, um, we're not gonna do it on a public auction. We're just gonna do it on a bid. We're just gonna put it in the newspaper and on the website, probably. We were, but I think there may be some local people that are interested. I mean, we could do both. It's- the other service is free, but the- the situation with that is that people have to travel to pick it up, and, I mean, I- I'm comfortable with whatever you wanna do. I mean, Steve had just said to do it in the newspaper, but we could do whatever you so choose. You declare it, and you decide how it's...
What we put on that the last time? I forget. We- we did, we...
We had two pieces of surplus tr- uh, equipment. We put on muni-bid.
What equipment was it? I forget. Was it highway?
It was fire department. Yeah, it was...
The rush truck, yeah.
Yeah, it was just some...
By the way, Ed picked up an operator.
What's the board's pleasure about advertising? Is put it in a local paper, put it on a service that we used the last time, and we got a decent bid the last time. It was very helpful.
That would go the way we went last time.
Were there any downsides?
Service, it's service, I think. As long as we got a good response last time, it's service.
Uh, and again, we can do both, but, I mean, advertising it costs us money, and if someone has some local interest, that almost seems more reason to put it on.
So what's the difference if it's declared surplus in how we treat it?
We have to declare it surplus so that it can be sold.
Right, so then...
And it's how it's sold.
It's how it's sold.
Right. Well, there's a process in the bylaw that says with- once the department head deems it to be surplus, then the board reviews it and- and confirms that, and then it actually identifies how you- what you have to do in the bylaw. So we also have to follow the bylaw, which is post in five places and advertise in a newspaper of local circulation. So we do that piece, and then we do whatever additionally you wanna do. So we have to buy the bylaw advertised anyway, locally.
Oh, but we got a good bid the last time, is all I'm thinking about. Why wouldn't we not follow the same bid process?
Or just do the same thing?
So is there a motion to do that?
So move, do the same thing.
So the motion- does the motion include declaring the ambulance surplus?
Yes, a move to declare the ambulance surplus and further to advertise it in the same manner that we did with the previous.
All in favor? Okay, upcoming events, we already started talking about March twenty-ninth, is now the charter hearing. Question becomes, do you want town council there?
Yes.
Absolutely.
All right, he pencils it in at our re- at his suggestion, and we will send him a letter asking that he attend. He is going to send us a letter of our options anyway. Um, and at that meeting, you will have your... I would assume we would go proceed by discussion amongst ourselves and deciding whether or not we think they're in violation of their contract.
Shouldn't we start early that night, so we could- we could, uh, kind of caucus before?
Can't caucus. You have- as of now, you have not made up your mind.
So this is all on the twenty-ninth?
And is this something that you want a charter representative or not? Tom had asked me on his way out the door. Or is that something I should check with Bill?
I think we should just tell them that we're gonna discuss that, and if they wish to attend, they're not requiring it.
So when do they- how long do they have to respond after we make a decision?
I think, um, town council, that's what's gonna be in his letter.
Okay, all right.
What the ne- what the steps are to...
So the twenty-ninth isn't gonna be about negotiation or...
Well, we suggested that we was gonna negotiate, yeah.
Which means they would have to be here.
Which means they should be. But again, it's up to them.
Talk about the whole...
All package.
Yeah, maybe Bill will make a recommendation, yeah. I mean, I think that- I just wanna say for the record, one of the delays in process- in- in getting moved forward with the contract is because we're still uncomfortable with these terms. They're the same terms.
We started that a year ago.
Yeah, we did, and so we're...
We're just finishing up the old contract.
And am I just a sp- oops, yep.
Okay, oh, I passed it out. It's an Excel spreadsheet.
Oh, can we come- can we just finish up this and then, um, we got annual town caucus March twenty-fourth? Is that just an announcement for purposes?
Yes.
Seven o'clock here, I would assume. What?
Yes, yes, seven o'clock downstairs, and we have a master planning meeting upstairs. Yeah, it'll be, um...
Here.
Here, in the meeting room, yeah. Downstairs here.
Um, okay, so, yes.
Yes, sir. Um, just, one of the things that we have been discussing here is the relative rate of, um, reimbursement to people, and we have agreed, at this point at least, to use the federal guidelines, which is fifty-one cents per mile driven for cars used. So just out of curiosity, in light of the fact that gasoline prices have been going up, I put out that spreadsheet that you can see there, and gasoline at different prices and driving at different miles. How many miles could be over a week, could be over a month. And I did arrange that gasoline prices, three dollars, three dollars and fifty cents a gallon, and then four dollars a gallon. It's my observation that right now, gas is settling around three fifty around here. It- prior to this, it was closer to three. Nonetheless, if you look at the highlighted sections, that's four hundred miles driven under those conditions, and you'll see the total reimbursement less the cost of the gasoline itself, and then the cash that would be left over under those reimbursement terms. So the difference between three dollars and four dollars, driving four hundred miles, is about twenty-six dollars cash that you would not have. You would have to have given to the gas station. So just in light of what we've been talking about here, about this motion of fairness and those kind of things, um, and two hundred dollars a month is a stipend. It was one of the terms that was passed out. I don't really see how in all fairness, we could yield to that request.
Your analysis, fifty-one cents is- is adequate.
Based on those terms, exactly, no. I've obviously made some assumptions there. What are the fixed costs? You have to pay excise tax. That was brought up, and registrations, I think, were brought up, and we've heard from folks who were looking to rent their car to the town, they pay the same if the car sits or is used. I broke it up into fixed costs and variable costs.
My impression is fifty-one cents for a limited amount of mileage for someone who doesn't have to respond to emergencies is adequate.
Very good.
As for the building inspector, he's not going from the town hall to someplace in the back and not looking at anything in the road. He's going around town as his- his job as enforcement, so he's a- he does a little bit more, and I think that's where the stipend comes in. But his- because he's actually, as he's driving around, he's looking around town, looking for a roof that's in town that's gonna run out and dump shingles someplace.
This is not an analysis about stipends, really. This is simply an analysis of what the impact is of rising gasoline prices on somebody's reimbursement for mileage. That's the only- that was the intent of the analysis. And I concluded that if gas went from three dollars to four dollars, whoever was reimbursed would have twenty-six dollars less cash in their pocket at the end of four hundred miles.
But the- the cost, the gasoline cost is still covered in a sense, right?
Absolutely, because you have- if you look at the...
There's money left over. They do a hundred miles, ninety dollars. They have thirty-one dollars left over that doesn't- has nothing to do with the ga- the fuel.
Could be for maintenance.
Goes to the insurance, it goes to the alky, it goes to the...
But they're all fixed costs that don't change if you don't- if you drive the car or not. So you still have plenty, you know, plenty. I'm not gonna say plenty. You always have cash.
But the fifty-one cents is actually, if I remember the federal rate, is not just for gas. It is actually a rate that's compensa- theoretically compensates you for air and tear and everything else.
And the feds will probably increase it, so what it...
Well, they will increase it, and then it- and gas rate will drop, and you'll be ahead for a short period of time and that. I- I- I think this is great, Jess. I think we ought to save a copy of that. I- fifty-one cents for a limited number of miles is- is more than enough.
So this whole letter about renting a car, forty-four dollars a day?
Seems to be specious and ill-informed, I think, from a cost perspective. My sense is, having done a lot of presentations to senior level and board-level management, looking for, um, justification, authorization to spend money, I think you need to at least present it in a cost perspective, not an emotional perspective. The meager reimbursement of the government is hardly technical analysis in my book. Then again, I'm an MBA. So what do I know?
Nothing. All right.
It's not fair.
Yep, okay. No, we're outside. We got- we gotta go back. We have two- two PCSs that were overlooked. We have a highway for a replacement driver, heavy equipment operator. Um, we have... Oh, I'm sorry, I take that back. We have the resignation of Stephen Payes from the highway department as that heavy equipment operator. So...
A motion to accept his resignation.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor? Then there's an application for posting by the highway department for a truck driver, heavy equipment operator. Um, it looks like the rate would be somewhere between thirteen ninety-three and fifteen ninety-three, of course, depending on his licensing. Is there a mo- motion to allow the highway department to post for the job position?
Second.
Second, all right. All in favor? And then... Okay, then we have a PCF for Jonathan Sizmonic, date of hire, ten eighteen ten. He is highway department. He's going from thirteen ninety-three to fifteen twenty-eight because he's- this license stipends are going up. He's got thirty-five cents an hour for catch basins and a dollar per hour for class B CDL, per the union contract.
So move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Lastly, we have a David Dressel, part-time resignation, one twenty- effective date, one twenty-eleven.
Who to accept his resignation?
Oh, this is the police officer that resigned to go maybe to Westfield?
Motion to accept his resignation.
All in favor?
Second and aye.
All in favor, aye. Um, that takes care of that, action list, Diana?
I don't have any action items.
Okay, timber cutting, anything, anything?
No, nothing. I just, could I just say a couple of things about the town hall, I, I won't go into all the punch list items, those are being worked on. Um, in terms of the council on aging, I did want to let you know that Ed is moving them over, he's moved some stuff over today, and I think he's gonna move the rest over next week. They had their first osteo process class upstairs today in the meeting room, and that worked out fine. So, we'll be able to house them on a temporary basis until the senior center issues are resolved, um.
Everything's out and moved?
No, not everything.
No, not everything's, but we, yeah, we're working on, we're working on resolution, um.
Boxes, we're gonna give them, at least that was when I spoke, the boxes were getting moved, and, and the file cabinets were staying.
Um, I think Ed said because they had so little, they decided to move it all, and we have found storage places in here. Um, I just mentioned on the grand opening, I just wanna throw this out too as an idea, how, I, I know you talked about Memorial Day, but there was some kinda, little bit contention on that. Is there any chance you'd be willing to consider May fourteenth?
How about all home days, Jess?
May fourteenth is, um, the weekend before annual town meeting. Um, I was, it's a Saturday, I was thinking, I mean, again, we have to go another couple of weeks to make sure these issues are resolved, but in anticipation of that being done, um, I was thinking we could have, you know, a grand opening here from say like nine to eleven and do tours, and have a, you know, a dedication or whatnot, and, um, but it's, it's out early enough where I think we could plan and invite the people we want to if we decide in the next couple of weeks. I'm thinking like in the morning, it's a Saturday, and, you know, presumably, hopefully, it'd be nice, I don't think people are gonna stop and, you know, stay all day, but just to walk through the town hall and come for the dedication and maybe go on a tour and, you know, do, do just, I'm thinking just before town meeting, so when people get to town meeting, people aren't asking the question, well, what's going on with the building? You know, we've kind of had the grand opening and showed people that it's done.
You're gonna need a budget to do something, you're gonna need some money to do some coffee and some.
Yeah, you could, you can, um, I did research the law, and you actually can buy food out of your expense budget if it's conducive to a meeting. So, in other words, if you're trying to get people to attend a meeting or attend a training or attend something like that, you can, so, and, and DLS agreed with that, but.
Is Saturday better than a Sunday?
I think a Saturday is better than a Sunday, just cause people are out and about anyway, and then they might just stop in and, you know, take a tour if they're just running errands or. Well, I was thinking of doing, yeah, like of planning some kind of event, not just, I'm just trying to say it's, I didn't, wasn't gonna get crazy with it, but, you know, having the legis, calling legislators to see if they would, you know, have a dedication ceremony from like nine to nine-thirty, and then just have an open house. But it would give you, you guys a chance, it'd be after the election, it would give you guys a chance to talk to people before the annual town meeting, if people have questions, we could, oh, I, I, depending on the, on the staff, I was thinking we'd open the town hall, so, you know, people wanted to come in and.
At the end of town meeting, we're gonna have an open house on such and such day, and people that do turn up.
Ask the staff to come in, what are you gonna do about paying?
Well, I don't know, I'm not, I, you know, I'm just thinking, I'm asking them, instead of coming in maybe that weeknight from six to eight, they come in on Saturday from nine to eleven.
Could we have a, could we have an opening on, on a weeknight?
You could, I, I mean, I'm just thinking.
Have the offices open and so that everybody's here?
How about the night of the election? You have an open house at that point, could it come out the door?
Yeah, you're gonna have, cause Eileen's.
It's gonna be really crazy with everything, yeah, I mean, that's true, people will be here, if you wanted to, maybe if you did it the weekend, like, or a week. It'd have to not be on a Tuesday, cause we're booked up through annual town meeting.
No, I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, but a Tuesday night, we don't run into problems, we want, we don't need a lot of time, we don't wanna pay anybody to open it. But have it on a Tuesday night, you know, and then say, from seven to seven-thirty was the opening ceremony, and then you can conduct your business and.
Yeah.
Take a tour.
That's fine, I'm just.
You don't have a, a BLS meeting.
Right, and, and if we did it on a night later in the year when it, not later in the year, but later in the period, when it's, like, it's maybe sunny by seven, seven-thirty, or, or daylight, so that we can be outside on front steps and.
May is gonna be nice.
Yeah, I, I just thought, we didn't wanna wait too much longer, we've been having, you know, like legislators, um, like, uh, Dan O'Brien came here from Co, uh, from Canapex's office, and he was like, oh, I didn't realize you opened the building, like, did you already have the grand opening, cause, you know, we might wanna come, and I'm like, we haven't had it yet.
How about the first Tuesday that the building is open in June, to push it, it's not quite so far, but so that we can have daylight, and then invite.
It's June seventh.
Tuesday, June seventh?
And how about, I'm trying to think how you can generate some interest, whether you, you send things to the various businesses in town that were having an open house, would they like to showcase their wares, their food?
Well, we've had meetings before, we had that.
No, I'm saying, in evening, seven o'clock.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the other thing is the building reuse committee wanted to invite the architect and all the people involved in the project, the architect, project manager, the contractor, yeah, there's, maybe they won't even wanna come at that point. But, um, so that's all, when Gary had said, you know, let us know, they just wanted to make sure those folks were invited.
We gotta come to a resolution, does anybody wanna express an opinion?
Come to a resolution tonight?
No, I, I just threw out that date of the fourteenth, and I was saying, just sort of think, keep it in your mind, if you wanna plan something, we gotta start soon. If you wanna push it off till June, then you can.
Well, I'm thinking, I was saying, I was thinking then you could be outside, the problem with this Saturday is, I don't know you're gonna draw anybody, but on a Tuesday night, if we're open and they, there's a lot of, you know, I don't know how we can encourage them to come, give them a discount on their taxes.
You have to get the seniors in.
Gotta get the seniors in here, and if the seniors are.
How about a band?
Huh?
How about a band, like the seniors, like the seniors, we're gonna have a band.
Because then the choral group starts playing over in the park, we can have them, ask them to come here, so by June, the choral group will be the, whatever they are, we plan, alright?
Right, alright, we'll talk about it more, thank you.
Anybody wanna make a motion? All in favor?